I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
All right, we're all here, we have a quorum. Public comment, committed opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Anybody in the audience? Sorry, my microphone is off. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? I don't hear anyone. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak? Raise their hand. Assuming somebody knows how to check that. So they don't raise their hand for nothing. All right? Anybody email or anything?
Did not receive any.
Perfect.
Email or phone calls.
All right. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda, I'll read the items. Entertained motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of July 12th. Accounts payable through July 22nd. The refis report for June of 2021 designation of, or proclamation designating National Night Out. Proclamation for Suicide Prevention plus Action Month. Resolution 2021-010, accepting water and sewer easements for the Village of Montgomery. And then G is Ordinance 1921 granting an amendment to a special use for, and PUD for Jericho slash Orchard Plan Unit Development. Second reading.
Move to per.
Second.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes. Mike Carey, six zero. Thank you. All right, items for separate action this evening, the first one is Montgomery Park.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna start this item for separate action by telling you I'm not looking for any action from you tonight. But I wanted it here because we need to take action on the grant. This is the next item on the agenda and they're related. So I wanted to have this discussion before you get to the grant so you'd have some background. As I think most of you recall, Representative Stephanie Kiffewitt secured a $200,000 grant for us for a Veterans Plaza. We initially started working with the VFW because it seemed like a natural thing to try and something on their property with their building. It came evident partway through that wasn't going to be feasible for us and for them. I mean, we agreed on that, so we started looking where else could we, could we do it? We started focusing on Montgomery Park because it could be part of a bigger project. We could do the Veterans Plaza memorial sort of thing. But also now that we don't have the Showmobile access, we talked about trying to put in a permanent, you know, sort of stage area that we could have for events for the fest and other things. So the first thing we did was talk to the park district just to see if that's something they would be supportive of. And had meetings with them and they are supportive of the idea. So we did talk to a landscape architect just to get a kind of an idea of how we could arrange things, get a brief estimate of, you know, basic estimate of cost and that kind of thing. So, you know, the stage would go kind of similar to where we're projecting to put it for the fest. So it would, you know, back up to, to Mill there and face out into the, the park. You've got a picture, kind of an example of what it might look like in your packet there. And then the memorial would go along the existing path that comes off of, off of the corner there at, at Mill and River. And on the layout you have in there, it shows some squares on both sides of the path. What we talked about as staff was expanding it beyond just honoring veterans with everything that happened over the last year and a half or so. Doing something to also honor first responders and educators, making it so, you know, sort of a multiple kind of thing. And there's some examples, the architect put in like kind of what it could look like. And then the third part of the project would be doing some restoration down along the shoreline, kind of where the turbine is. Trying to stabilize that area, you know, put, trying to have some seating kind of thing, just to make that a nicer area. So as I said, we've talked to the park district, Laura's drafted an agreement that we will give to them and kind of lay out the responsibilities. You know, we talked to them about if they would want us to take over ownership of the land or if they'd rather it be a lease type thing. You know, they've kind of gone back and forth. Right now they think they'd prefer it to be a long-term lease where we would construct it, they would maintain it. You know, but we're trying to set that, you know, now get that worked out and then bring something for you guys to look at. The next item on the agenda, Director App put in for a $10,000 grant from ComEd which we received that would go towards the shoreline stabilization part of the project. The current estimate would be for the whole thing be between 400,000 and 500,000. So we've got the 200,000 that we originally had, now the 10,000. The rest staff would say our recommendation should be either take it from the MDF, the Montgomery Development Fund because it is helping with the downtown area, or that we would use some of our general fund reserve and pay for it out of that. Our reserve is currently in excess of the 25% we're required to have, so we could take it out of that and still, still meet our reserve requirements. So, plan tonight was just kind of to talk about it with you, let you look at some of the pictures. If you have questions now, happy to answer them, but otherwise I'd say take it, read it, think about it. You know, call with questions or email and then we would bring it back to a, a future meeting to get feedback on, you know, what you like, don't like. The plan would be if it's something you guys are in favor of, we would try and be ready to go as soon as we can after the fest so that we could have everything in place next year for the fest. We'd have the stage ready and, and have the monuments up and that, so.
One of the, the things as I look at this, whether it was the Funmobile or whatever it was that we used to use for Montgomery Fest, what was it?
Showmobile.
Showmobile, Funmobile.
That's way better.
Okay.
Funmobile's better.
The Funmobile and then we have this stage that we're bringing in now. It elevates the people, the bands and those sorts of things. I would like to see some sort of raised platform, simply because if you have bands down here and you have people and everything standing there, it's hard for the people behind to see. So that's my, my only comment right now.
All right.
It was exactly the same comment I was gonna make. In fact, I mentioned it earlier on the phone with Christina that it just need, it just needs to have some kind of a rise on it so that it can, people in the back can see. And then also making sure that it has, and one of the images, and I know that these are just some thumbnails, has the ability to put light rigging up. Now, we don't need, maybe that's something that we put in for the fest, you know, like we put it in place for the fest. It's not there year-round, but that's a huge advantage to this new stage versus our old one was the lighting doesn't need to be on the ground, it can be elevated. So it allows us, remember last year we put lighting in and we lost about an eight foot of frontage on the stage. This elevating it and allowing it to be rigged will be better.
And integrated some sort of electrical for, for the lighting and power issues that we're gonna need for a stage like that? And that's really a, we'll, we'll take direction from you, Mark.
Yeah, and those are things that we've talked about in the process already early about just making sure that we provide ample power for different events that we wish to host there.
Okay, thank you.
And one of the bigger pictures and the focus for this is that, you know, we do Montgomery Fest. There, there are concerts in the park that were down there, the Easter egg. Like there are plenty of events that are there and there could be more. I know some of the businesses have inquired about doing events there. And this hopefully would help encourage that. As one of our focuses now is to try and encourage more use of our downtown. Whether that's the village running everything is not exactly my goal, but getting more foot traffic downtown, I think, so. This will certainly help. Any other thoughts?
Like it.
Anything else? And you know, the one question I was gonna ask is I know, I've, I've heard from the park district that when you are, when you earned a grant like this, that the funding might never come. I mean, I know, Tom, you've dealt with that. But we just recently got the information from, is it DCEO or who is it, sent it to you, Mark?
Correct, yes.
That the funding is available and ready?
Correct.
So does that mean that we're better off than some other projects? I don't know.
Means spend it now before they take it away.
Yes.
That's what I'm like, we'd like to keep, keep going with it while they want to give us money and.
Occasionally there's penalty if you are awarded a grant and don't accept it, you will be taken out of the grant cycle for up to two years. The, the state has some interesting rules.
Yeah. All right.
Like I said, our plan would be to move forward, talking to the park district, work on things, then bring it back to you guys to see what other questions you have and kind of lay out a more specific plan.
Cool.
All right, thank you. Moving on. Item B this evening is Resolution 2021-012, authorizing participation in the ComEd Green Region Program for the Montgomery Park Shoreline Enhancement Naturalization Project. Director App.
Yes, as Jeff mentioned, we did apply for the grant for this portion of the project. So this would be shoreline stabilization and planting, including some natural plantings along the shoreline, some stabilization and emergent plantings out there. So we sent the application, we did get an award for the full amount that they offer, the 10,000. As part of those requirements is adopting a resolution agreeing to, to use the funds and authorizing the project. So as part of our submittal to accept the money, we have to provide this. So it's on the agenda for you tonight.
Any questions?
This would start right away as well.
The work?
Yeah.
When would, when would construction occur?
Again, we'd look to, you know, after the fest.
As soon as possible, yeah.
We have to get a, get our plan, you know, a more firm plan on what we're planting and all that. But once we have that, then it would either be fall or spring, I would guess, depending on when we're.
Okay, thank you.
How much of the project will it fund?
A little less than half. The estimated cost is about $25,000 and so we got $10,000 of the grant to, to cover it, so.
Motion to approve.
Welcome. Any questions?
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Mike Carey, six zero, thank you. Item C for separate action is Resolution 2021-013, supporting a study of the dam removal or a modification of the Montgomery Dam by the IDNR. Who would like to go first? Engineer Walsh?
So this is an item that we haven't discussed for some time, but you might recall that several years ago, the village participated in a concept level study to look at a border, what was called a border bypass around the Montgomery Dam with the idea of being able to have a continuous waterway that you could paddle around the dam safely. So we've, from time to time, have discussed this with IDNR and, you know, funding kind of ebbs and flows. But there, the state, recently we've had discussions with them. There is funding to look at, you know, dam modification, dam removal. Their goals are to make the dam safe and to, you know, try to include fish passage and other environmental benefits to the project. You know, we may have a little set of different goals, but the only way we're gonna move, be able to move forward is to work with IDNR to work, move forward on a memorandum of understanding of what each party would do if we wanted to explore a removal or modification of the dam. It may require the village spending some money on the study. It may also require us spending money on the, you know, the modification or, or the project. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. The first step is just if the board is willing to allow staff to sit down with DNR, work out the, what would be in a, in a study and bring it back to you then for approval. Try to earmark, you know, what elements we would be responsible for as the village and what the state would be doing. And then it would progress from there and then there would be another time when we would decide, you know, there would be public input and other things. But we have to get, have to get to the point where we can have dialogue and we don't really have the information right now to have the dialogue, so. So that's what this is for. It's really the first step in, in a process and, you know, it's, again, it's things that have been talked about, but to move it. And, you know, just as everybody may recall, the dam, it is owned by the state of Illinois. And there are other, you know, stakeholders out here. The Fox Valley Park District is a stakeholder as well and they participated with the original concept level study, so. But this would be, again, the first step as, as to what would happen with, with a dam, so.
Well, so I'm not in support of removing the dam? That's a step dam, isn't it?
So, I don't know, you know, the, I don't know if that configuration is safe because I think the concern is whether or not there's a, you know, what, several of the dams, let's just take the Orkville Dam because I know there was a keeper current there and that had to be, you know, rebuilt to eliminate the keeper current. I don't know for sure what configuration of the spillway we have I can find out. So I don't know exactly, I just can't answer that question.
Yeah, I, you know, I've always thought the solution would be to modify that dead end finger. Because I mean, that's an issue anyway, that's just dead water, it's stagnant, it stinks. If we could do something over there with some type of a passage and a spillway, modify that and, and leave the dam alone. You know, I've been in town for 35 years and we've never had an issue with that dam. Because if you watch it, no matter what the flow of the water is, whatever goes over it, it kicks it right out and, and down the stream. And that's why we don't have a lot of things rolling in it or, or trees or anything stuck in it. So I, you know, I, I would support doing something on that dead end finger, but I'm not in support of removing that dam.
Right. And the good, the good thing is, just real quick, that this isn't, this isn't a vote to remove the dam or even, you know, go 10 miles down that road. The, the goal here is to get them to look. So they made it very obvious and evident when we were on the call with them that they have funding available and they are tasked with removing dams. So in my opinion, this is actually probably one way where we can have a seat at the table and maybe ensure that it just doesn't get outright removed. We have no say in the matter, but if we end up in an MOU with them where we can look at, they were pretty clear on the call that we need to hit some of their big goals, you know, safety, fish passage. And if we can hit those goals with either modification or looking at the channel, I don't know exactly what they're going to do, but they also made it clear that they want to spend their limited funds in towns that, that want them to be there. So if there was, you know, significant opposition from this board, now would be a great time to say that we're not interested at all because they don't have funds to do everything that they have to do right now, but they do have us earmarked.
And I think since, well, since I've been a trustee, we've actually had, that idea has come up several times. But we have talked about this, it has come, sort of just a discussion, it was kind of out there on our radar for several years now. And it was either make that modification where we could have that pass along that, that area, that dead ends or on a bigger scale, removing the dam.
Or partial.
Right.
They might be open to that.
So if I'm understanding correctly, this is really just to have a study done to give us some options, really more information.
Correct.
So I, I would be in favor, I, I would love to have more information on it. I, I think that would be incredibly helpful.
I, I have a couple of questions. First, what is the benefit of the dam? And then second, if Montgomery decides to go to Fox Valley or Fox River for water, does the dam having it in that location impede the opportunity or the possibility of intake from the Fox River for water for, for purposes of use for the village?
So let's take the first question first. So the spillway was installed, this particular, so there's a number of dams on the Fox River and we can bring in folks that are more knowledgeable about it, but I'll just give you the, the short version. That particular dam was part of the Stratton Project, which was Governor Stratton's idea of making the Fox River navigable. So the side channel was intended to be a lock to allow boats to pass through. So the spillway creates a pool so you can boat above the dam. In terms of water quality, I think most of the experts would tell you that the dam is detrimental to the health of the river. It creates a dead zone on the upstream side and so it's, it's not healthy. There's, it promotes algae blooms and things like that. So I think if you looked at, you know, just, if you looked at in terms of overall, most folks would say, you know, elimination of the dams would make for a healthier river. I think there might be some opposing views because of other things, but I think from a water quality standpoint, you'd see better health for the river. So it doesn't provide, and this is, you know, maybe a little surprising, but it doesn't provide any flood control. So, and if you look at the, if you take the time to look at the flood profiles of FEMA issues, you'll see that the flood flows at 100 years are actually over the top of the spillway. So it will have minimal impact on any flooding in the future. So if it's removed, the flood levels will be the same. If it's left in place, flood levels will be the same. And far, as far as a pool to use for withdrawal of the, you know, potential water, that probably needs a little more discussion. I think there's some advantage that you create depth, but you also create a lot of sediment and a lot of things that aren't that desirable, so the screening would have to be pretty precise. So I'm not sure it would be the number one location that we would look at for a, for a withdrawal. But that one we might have to talk a little bit more about. And I mean, these are all things that we can get into if we do a study, right? Because right now, we're gonna have to draw upon other experts to get some input on all of those things so that we can resolve this. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I mean, I've sat down at the IDNR with you several years in a row discussing this and there's a big interest with the deoxygenated water on the upside stream. When they take them out, the silt that's built up and the gradual release of that silt because it'll destroy downriver when it's released. So, I mean, yeah, I'm in support of, you know, continuing to look for the future of resolving this issue. And again, the border bypass would be, you know, a great feature for us, especially as we're starting to get interest in the downtown area.
Yeah, now it's basically impossible to, it's really hard to bypass that dam.
You guys did it. You ported the canoes around.
We, we had government vehicles that drove us around it. But Pete and I have walked down there and I think we, we even surveyed it. It's, it's pretty steep to get down, down to that pool and then up to that berm and then walk in your kayak around. We kind of looked at that for a while as maybe an interim way to get people around, so. All right, anything else?
If the, understanding this is only step one of 150, if it gets to that point of dam removal modification, these are funds that IDNR has to spend or is the village obligated to put forth a portion of the project cost as well?
I would say going into it, I would expect that you probably will be participating in some of the cost. But until the study's done and they identify, you know, what the costs are, I don't think it's, I can't really tell you what that would be. But I, I don't think, I think it would be naive to say that we're gonna go into this and it's gonna get 100% funded by somebody else. I, I think we should prepare ourselves that we might have to invest in this. I think if we said, you know, just do the dam removal, then that would probably be 100% funded by DNR. But if we want to do a modification and, you know, put the border bypass in, I think that's where local funds would be needed.
The decision on that is long down the road. And I don't know how long it will take them to study this, but a while probably.
Yeah, I mean, as you can appreciate, you know, like everybody, that, you know, there's, they have limited manpower. They want to put their resources where they have willing partners. And so the first step for them is to, to see if, you know, the village is willing to work on a, an agreement to, to do a study. And that's step one, so. And they're willing to come here and, and present to you either by Zoom or in person, you know, once we get into this, into the memorandum of understanding on the agreement, so.
So as part of the study, will they look at the other option, that, that dead end finger there to the east?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we would be satisfied if we didn't look at it.
Okay.
Part of the memo, right? Yeah, and that, and then to answer Matt's, you know, query is that might be something that we have to pay for. You know, that might be a part of the study that they would say, no. You know, I, we don't know, until we get into it with them, we're just not sure. But again, I, you know, just knowing everybody's got limited resources, I think that there might be a local contribution, but we'll find out.
Okay.
And we'll bring back the, the memorandum of understanding, you guys can take a look at it. If there's something that isn't covered, that you want covered, we'll take it back to them and say the board would like this added.
Okay.
All right, anything else? You'd like a motion?
I'd love a motion.
Motion for Resolution 2021-013, supporting the study of dam removal.
Second.
Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Mike Carey, six zero. Thank you all.
I'd just like to add that I'm disappointed with the board and staff that no one quoted National Lampoon's Vacation during this previous discussion, so.
Surely didn't know where you're going with that until the end. I was prepared to jump. All right, moving on. Do not let Steve down. Item D, today's Resolution 2021-011, to induce the redevelopment of certain property within the proposed redevelopment project area. That is a super insightful line. All right, Jericho Road. Now it's got a road.
All right. As you know, on a consent agenda, we just approved Gas and Wash to go on this property. So this is an 18 acre parcel that's at the corner of Jericho and Orchard. The overall development is inclusive of additional buildings, hopefully another retail center, another restaurant, et cetera. So the developers come before us looking for an inducement resolution so they can begin considering expenditures that would be redevelopment project costs as we work towards a redevelopment agreement with them for that project. This is located in TIF number two. So as Gas and Wash has got their approvals and is moving towards permit, it's important for us to be able to get this resolution approved so they can start capturing some of those engineering costs, et cetera, for the overall development they have to do.
I have a question.
Now, we went back, they initially came to us with a number and projects and you went back to them.
Right.
Are we still in that negotiation?
We're, we're trying to finalize all those numbers so that we can get a redevelopment agreement before you quickly, so we're getting closer.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so that redevelopment agreement will come and.
Be a separate item.
Separate, so this is the same one that we've gifted for the grid.
Exactly.
It's a, it starts the clock, basically.
Exactly.
Got it, okay.
And then we would bring back the agreement to.
Okay. The agreement is the meat and potatoes and this is just the appetizer?
Yes.
Is there a motion on the appetizer?
Yes, there is. Since I've missed dinner, thank you for the food references. Motion for 2021-011 to induce development, redevelopment of certain properties, Jericho and Orchard.
Second.
And since I kind of jumped the gun on that, is there more discussion? All right.
Mr. Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
All right, Carey, six zero, thank you. All right, the last item for separate action this evening is a PSA with EEI for construction engineering for the Route 31 water main improvements.
Thank you, President Volley. So at the May 24th board meeting, the board approved a contract with H Linden &amp; Sons for the installation of water main along the Route 31 corridor, corridor from the northern boundary where the village butts the city of Aurora, basically south to Ashland Avenue. So this PSA before the board tonight, it would be for construction observation, daily inspections and quantity agreements throughout the duration of the project for the amount of $77,505 for Engineering Enterprises. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you. Anything?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Mike Carey, six zero, thank you. All right. We don't have anything for discussion, anything new or unfinished? Anything at all that's happened recently that you'd like to talk about?
I do, please. Trace, you got anything, Trace?
I do, I, I was.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just one quick thing. I wanted to say that I saw many of the banners throughout town and I think they look fantastic, so. Well done on the new banners and the design on them, so. That is it.
Agreed.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anything else on this side?
Yep, one quick thing, we, the volunteer group held the dime jingle at the hall last week. Very well attended, about 36 people, which is, and there was quite a few newer people there.
Very well attended, about 36 people, which is, and there was quite a few newer people there. And the majority of the people expressed a desire to restart senior launch, so we'll start working on that. Yeah, I told them it was all based on metrics and how we're doing with this new strain and what the governor does. But we'll be working on that, start that up in September.
I'm gonna see Denny Lee tonight and he made me promise to say something about the Packers and I just want to confirm that that is the ugliest color combination I've ever seen in the NFL. So I did what I said, Denny.
Anything else? Cool. All right, I thought you were stopping me.
Nope.
Future meetings, it looks like beautification is canceled or was previously canceled? So since we're canceling a meeting, is there a motion?
It's canceled.
To, is there a motion to approve the meeting schedule?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Perfect. We do not have executive session. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.